Regular city council meeting of October 22nd, it is 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to rise with us as we pledge allegiance led by Councilman Brad Brundgren.
I pledge allegiance to the life of United Native Americans, to their Republic which sustains one nation under government, individual liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. I have no cards that were filled out and we have no records that were sent in earlier. We have none. I'll do a public service announcement. It's brought to my attention that a lot of people have been calling City Hall and other places saying, can we vote already? And if we can vote, where do we do it? And so, early voting started yesterday and it runs from seven to seven Monday through Saturday and from 10 till four on Sunday. And voting is at 602 East Concho, which is catty-cornered from the number one fire station and a block east of the Public Safety Center. So, please go vote if you're registered. If you're not registered, be sure to register for this time next year. But that is where voting is taking place, started yesterday. So much is for that. Next item on the agenda, we've got some proclamations for three different events. First of all, for 4H Week. We've got anybody here from 4H? There you are, very good. I'm going to read it from here so that it gets recorded and I'll come bring it to you right up there. Whereas the City of Rockport is proud to honor the Texas 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 116 years and providing experienced-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas the program's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 18, come from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 30,000 volunteers who have given generously their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans through its innovative and inspiring programs and continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Tim Jarrow, the City of Rockport, State of Texas, do proclaim October 6th to 12th, 2024, as National 4H Week in Texas and commend 4H Youth Development Program, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, and the many men, women, who have made the program a success. And whereof I have herein to set my hand and the official seal of the City of Rockport this 22nd day of October, 2024. And I've got this for you. I don't see, with my approach going, I'll have to watch real hard, see if anybody's got a camera to come up here and fucking want to get a picture.
You got it, Shelley? Or Shelley, the other Shelley.
Mayor.
Our live streaming is not working, so we are only recording this meeting.
Okay. As long as y'all can hear me out there, we won't worry about the rest of it. All right. Next is proclamation proclaiming November 1st through November 9th is Arbor Day Week in Rockport. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that the idea of setting aside a special day for planting trees. And whereas this day known as Arbor Day was first celebrated with the planting of over a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now celebrated across the nation and around the world with the first Texas Arbor Day being observed in 1889 under the leadership of the Texas Forestry Association. And whereas Arbor Day provides an opportunity to each important lessons about the stewardship of our natural resources, learn how we can contribute to keeping our community's trees healthy and take time to appreciate the role trees play in our everyday lives. And whereas recovery efforts including the replanning of trees have been ongoing due to the significant loss of trees caused by Hurricane Harvey in 2017. And whereas the 2024 Rockport Arbor Day Festival will kick off with a party on November the 1st from 5:30 till 8:30 at the Fulton Mansion. And whereas the week of November 1st through November 9th, 2024 will include an oak tree sale with special package deals and various educational opportunities related to tree planting and care. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Jarrow, on behalf of the City of Rockport, Texas, do hereby proclaim Friday, November 1st, 2024 through Friday, November 8th, 2024, as Arbor Day Week. And encourage all residents of Ranges County to join fellow citizens across the United States in participating in this meaningful observance. And witness whereof I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rockport, Texas, to be affixed this 22nd day of October, 2024. We have Arbor Day, folks, here. Very good, we'll do this again. Next, we have a little bit more solemn event to talk about briefly. We have frequently been heard to say at these meetings that the volunteer firefighters in our area don't get the recognition that they deserve. And that most people think that they get paid and that they are just like firefighters all around the countryside. And they don't realize that the firefighters in our area are all volunteers. They do it with their own time, they do it with their own money, and they are dedicated, hard-working people who work extremely hard on our behalf to see that we are all kept safe. Along that line, we recently lost the Fire Chief here in town, Mr. Guerrero, who had been Fire Chief for three years. He grew up in this town and by the time he'd been out of high school for a year, he had gone through the firefighter's school over at Del Mar and was already a certified firefighter. For the last three years of his life, which was cut short, he was the Fire Chief and took care of everything that was needed in the fire station along with being a volunteer for EMS. So I've got a proclamation I want to read. I'd like his family and folks to come up. I'm going to stand up here, I'd rather be with y'all when I read this. And any firefighters that want to come be up here with him, please come up, we'll get pictures while we go. Whereas on September 27th, 2024, please divine providence in its all nine ways to remove from our midst our beloved friend, faithful servant, Aaron Guerrero. Bringing to an untimely end a life filled with timbres and service. And whereas Aaron Guerrero graduated from Rockport Fulton High School in 2005 and by 2006 he had completed Del Mar Fire Academy earning Master Fire, sorry, Master Fire Service, a foundation that would lead to a heroic and impactful career. And whereas for over two decades, Aaron served as a firefighter dedicated in his life to saving others. For his leadership and courage shown brightly as he rose to rank of Fire Chief, Rockport Volunteer Fire Department, a role he held for three years. And whereas Chief Guerrero's commitment to his community extended beyond the firehouse, as volunteer with the Ranges County EMS. And whereas during Chief Guerrero's two decades of exemplary service, he has demonstrated the highest standards of ethics, values, and whereas Aaron's dedication, devotion, volunteers were shining examples of community service and service to others. And whereas the City of Rockport takes public and official recognition of his long and faithful service to the citizens of this city and express to his grieving family our sincere appreciation of his dedicated performance, duties, and service, and our deep realization of the loss we have sustained. And whereas throughout his many years serving as volunteer firefighter and chief, Aaron Guerrero gained respect, admiration, and highest regard for all those who knew him, encountered, and the love and affection of all who will proudly call him a friend. Now therefore, I, Tim Jarrow, Mayor of the City of Rockport, Texas, hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2024, as a day of remembrance and honor, Rockport Volunteer Fire Chief Aaron Guerrero. And encourage the citizens of the City of Rockport to take a moment to reflect on the invaluable contribution he made to our community. And witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rockport to be affixed this 22nd day of October, 2024. I pledge allegiance. All right. Now to get around to regular business. Before we get started, we will do a roll call to establish quorum, Ward 1.
Here.
Ward 2.
Here.
Ward 3.
Here.
And Mayor is here. We do have a quorum. All right. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon in a single motion. No separate discussion or action of any of the items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the city council. Anyone wish to remove any of those from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Yes, I second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? We'll call for a vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Next item, ordinances and resolutions. Item number 10, consider approval on single reading of ordinance 1957, amending ordinance 948, which adopted the 2024-2025 budget beginning October 1st, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for publication, providing for an effective date. Mr. Sorrell.
Good evening, thank you. There are two items, there's two amendments, one to the utilities fund and the other to the general fund. The one to the, the one that's going to be to the utilities fund, excuse me, is we were awarded a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant around the end of August. It was too late to get into the budget, to include in the budget for this year, so we're wanting to amend the budget for this year. But what this grant program does is it includes new automatic transfer switches, diesel-powered fixed emergency generators, and other associated opportunances, it's hard to say. The existing generators will be removed and new generators will be installed in place requiring minimal setup. This will ensure that the City of Rockport Water Pump Station and Volunteer Fire Department will remain operational during power outage situations. It's what this is for. Item B, and this was approved in the consent agenda, and this is to support that. It's a sinkhole drainage improvements located at 1919 Crescent Drive. These were budgeted last year and they were, we were trying to get them completed last year, but we ran out of time. We went out for quotes, we only had one contractor that bid, so we held it open longer and we did receive another quote. The first quote was like 200,000. The other quotes came and we actually received one that was for like 80,000, so significantly less. So we decided to go with that one, but from a, but from a timing standpoint, we were unable to get it completed last year. So therefore those funds went to reserve. So what we're wanting to do is appropriate those funds in this year to complete this project. What we're asking for, excuse me, what we're asking for, for the hazard mitigation match, it's a 90-10 match. 10% of that match would be for $21,385. And again, the amount that we're looking to appropriate for the sinkhole drainage improvements would be $80,000. So we're asking that those amendments be approved, please.
Okay. Questions, Council?
I have one. I have one. Robbie, the 80,000 was approved last year's budget and we just didn't get it done, so it's been sitting there waiting to be used. We're not?
Yeah, we were unable to get to, yeah.
So that 80 carried over from last year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Not if I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 10.
Have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Call for a vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number 11, consider approval of Resolution 2024-21R, appointing the members of the Convention and Visitor Bureau Board postponed from September 10th, 2024, city at the regular city council meeting that day. That's a good one. I was waiting for somebody to get up and look like they were the guilty one. Needed to talk.
Were you looking at me, Sarge?
No. So, this one was proposed because y'all wanted to see more bios and resumes. And I received bios and resumes for everyone but two. And two, we did receive Sandra Jumpers. I emailed it out to y'all last night. Other than that, we have 12 people apply. And you have, the commission is made up of six members and one is a, and then an additional one for council members, making it seven. And there are certain restrictions. One member has to be a lodge, from a lodge sector, lodging sector. One has to be from a tourism sector. One is a restaurant. Another is historic. One is art sector. And then you have, the seventh position is your Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce member.
All right.
Now, the president of the Chamber of Commerce will serve as an ex officio along with the city manager and the EDC director.
So I believe you've been given a spreadsheet where each qualifies. You may, you could go through them one by one and point, appoint each position as you like. Or if someone wants to make a motion for all six as a whole, you could do it that way. Or you can table it again if you're not prepared to vote tonight.
All right.
I did provide a resolution as well, which would appoint everybody in which position.
Did you make a recommendation to do this? Have Pudo point? Yeah, I don't think so.
Do you guys want to go one by one?
Like, start with art and then we can have open discussion and then at the end we can make a full motion? Okay. For art, I think obviously Louis would be the better fit.
Agreed.
That's my preference and recommendation for that position.
No problem.
Do we write, do you want us to write?
I'll write it down and then I'll give you a motion.
Okay. I have known Jeanne Batka for several years. She's been involved with Chamber of Commerce, she has hotels here in town, and she's been very gracious in letting us use those things for a lot of events that we have held. And I feel like you won't find anybody better for lodging.
That was my recommendation as well.
I agree.
All right.
For chamber, my preference would be summer.
Any other?
That's fine with me, that's fine.
That's fine with me.
Restaurant?
Well, I guess it's great.
That's what I have too.
Is there one that takes off the restaurant? Mr. Griffin?
All right.
And tourism?
Tourism and historical, right?
Mm-hmm.
Tourism, historical.
So, I'll speak because I want to kind of talk about both of these. Generally, I would jump straight to Jennifer with the historical, right, preference. But really looking at it, my absolute preference, just because I know the advocacy Jennifer has had bringing attention to this area, I think she'd be really, really good in the tourism section to represent. And then pulling Michael in, the historical, just because of his experience within the museums and history. I think that's a win-win.
Okay. No problem with that. How many is that?
And all you need is a council member.
So tourism, you want Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And Michael Historical? And then, yep. Council member.
I think it's obvious that the one that's not here gets nominated for that one.
Oh, yeah.
She has been involved in it.
Yeah. Can we, can we wait to ask her if she's willing to serve that one?
Can we make that decision when everyone's present?
Absolutely.
Just to make sure she's okay with it?
Yeah, but we can appoint these people, we can get started on the things that we need to do and then.
Appoint the council member at a later date.
We need to see her CV.
You need, absolutely.
She'll do it, we can point.
All right, so you need a motion?
Yes.
You have her names?
Move to approve item?
Just the resolution.
Uh, just the resolution. Move the CBV resolution to add Luis Perron, Jeanne Batka, Summer Terrell, Craig Griffin, and Jennifer Day and Michael Emels to the CBV board. That's second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Not, we'll call for a vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Congratulations to all of you hard workers and the rest of you will find something for you to do, I promise. All you gotta do is let us know you're interested. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of Resolution 24, 2024-27-R, authorizing participation with the cities served by AEP Texas, Inc. Authorizing hiring of legal counsel, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law and requiring notice of this resolution to legal counsel. Mr. Sorrell.
Thank you. Again, this is consideration of authorization resolution. This was prepared by the Lloyd Gosling Group. On, on or about Wednesday of September 25th, AEP filed a petition, filed an application, excuse me, seeking approval of a proposed transmission and distribution resiliency plan. The company filed this plan at the Public Utility Commission pursuant to a new state statute enacted by the 88th Legislature. This statute allows utilities to file three-year resiliency plans to enhance their systems against extreme weather conditions. In this proceeding, the commission will approve a three-year plan and the company will recover costs to implement the plan through future distribution, cost recovery factors, and other interim rate adjustments. In total, AEP proposes to spend $352.1 million over the next three years on this, on the study. The issues addressed in this filings are very important for system resiliency, but also very costly on a per customer basis. The Lloyd Gosling has obtained authorization and will be intervening in this proceeding on behalf of the cities, the cities served by AEP Texas, TCAF, I think is commonly called. And this intervening will allow Lloyd Gosling to evaluate AEP's proposal of this plan. And so, what we're asking is that council approve us, approve the resolution to allow Lloyd Gosling to review this plan on our behalf.
Council, questions?
Robbie, this is a continuation of what we started the ball, August, July, August, whatever, something like that.
This is, this is new. This is even new.
Okay.
Of course, this is more fallout from Yuri, from the freeze.
Okay.
For system resiliency. There's been a number of things, but no, this is, this is a new one.
So I think the resolution on the one you're speaking of was they were not granted their increase in revenue, but they were agreed, they weren't agree, hmm, they weren't awarded the entire amount they asked for, but they were awarded a lower amount?
I think it was a lower amount.
So, maybe we had a different payment, but they didn't get their whole, their whole increase.
So this is something totally, a total different fight with the?
Yes, and we're, and we're looking for the same thing for something a little less than $352 million. Even though they have to do it, is the thing.
Okay. Other questions, Council?
Can I add that this does not cost us to join into this coalition of cities? It's just a resolution for us, or I don't know if it's a resolution, but it's, it's a commitment for us to say, we agree with you.
All right.
I move to approve bottom 12 as presented.
Have a motion to have a second.
Have a second?
Have a motion and a second. Further questions? We'll call for a vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Other items, item number 13, consider approval of the City of Rockport Employee Holidays for 2025. That's a good one.
So, this next year, we are proposing 13 holidays. And the reason why there's one extra, in 2025, Christmas Eve is on Wednesday, Christmas Day Thursday, which leaves a Friday, and we are proposing to be able to take off that Friday as well instead of coming back for one day. So, the other holidays are the same. The only one that interferes with the council meeting is Veterans Day, November 11th, so we'll have to move that one. And if you want to give us any other holidays, we'll be happy to take those.
All right. Questions, Council?
I'm personally fine with the 26 being taken off. I think it's pretty much a dead day for the city. I think you might be coming here burning, burning down the doors to get in here to do something.
And you hire all the buildings and, you know, I'm in production, but, I don't have any resources for that.
And it'd really be good if people came into town to shop, to raise the tax dollars, too?
Well, if they employ you, they often, they gotta go shop and spend that money, and then shop. No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
There's no questions, I have a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to have a second.
Aye.
I've got two seconds. Motion, two seconds. Call for a vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number 14, consider approval of Utility Bill Surcharge Fund Dispersment Report. Annual reports from Fulton, Lamar, Volunteer Fire Apartments, and Rockport Volunteer Fire Department authorize dispersment of funds. I knew there was a reason those guys were sitting back there after those folks were gone.
Good evening, yes. This, we do this every year. This is, this has to do with the, with the fire fund that collects, now it's collecting $3 per connection, but for the last year it was $2, $2 per connection. And so, per charter, the first. two, two dollars per connection. And, uh, so, uh, per, per charter, uh, the first, first meeting in October, uh, those monies that are voluntarily collected throughout the year, um, are to be dis- dispersed and the charter li- lists out how, how that, how that allocation is set forth. And so, um, without going through the chapter and verse of it, of it all, uh, bas- basically it comes down to, uh, seventy-seven percent for the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department. Fulton, twenty-three percent, and then Lamar gets the natural, the natural gas, uh, the natural gas connections, gets that, that piece. The, the, uh, the amounts are up about sixty-eight thousand more than they were last year, um, which happy, happy to say. Uh, these monies are, are earmarked to be used really strictly for capital purchases, uh, which is generally anything over, over five thousand dollars or has a life of over, over a year. And, and so what, what, what we've also done is, uh, we've sent out, we've sent letters to the volunteer fire departments to ask them if they would be gracious enough to, to come speak to, to council to talk about what, what they've been done, done with the money, um, that, that they received last year and are what they're planning on doing with the monies received, received this year. Uh, the dollars amount involved, uh, Rockport Volunteer, Rockport Volunteer Fire Department is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, Fulton Volunteer Fire Department is fifty-six thousand, fifteen dollars. Lamar is eight thousand, sixteen dollars. So they're, they're up significantly again from, from last year. Uh, we also have, I believe, the checks, what we've done differently, perfect, uh, from last year is that we have the checks available, so if we want to do some, take some pictures, that we can do that as well. So I guess what I'd like to do is invite if anybody would like to come. You're welcome to. Thank y'all for coming out to.
We need to buy big checks.
Yes.
They give a hard time to pass.
See, I'm gonna work on that cash.
And they're paying the store.
Are you wanting them together or first?
I go right here now. I'm just coming around here so that, and you're ready by that time.
Okay, um, just want to say I appreciate what y'all do and the support you give us. Uh, increasing the amount is, is really helpful to us. And it helps us buy the things that we need. You know, for us, uh, one of the biggest expenses, well, there's a lot of big expenses, but bunker gear and radio equip, radio equipment. That is going through the roof and that's what this money would be used for. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This money helps us out a lot. Last year, we didn't use any of our funds. We put it in a truck phone because we're about to order a one point two million dollar fire truck. So this will go earmarked toward that, so that'll hopefully help us get it closer to that goal. Thank you.
Matt Fulton, we, uh, appreciate y'all taking care of the monies and, and getting it out to us. Uh, really does help us. This last year, our big, our biggest capital expense, we were able to build our, uh, rebuild our substation out in Copano, Copano Cove after it was destroyed by Harvey. Um, and other expenses of bunker gear and radios, like, uh, Carl said, they're, uh, very expensive. But, uh, still saving up, you know, for, uh, more equipment. Hopefully do a refurb on a rescue instead. I'm gonna buy a new one. And, uh, things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, you heard what I'm here to say. You have any questions for us?
No, no questions, but thank you guys for what you're doing.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number fourteen as presented.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Gentlemen. I can't tell you enough how much we appreciate y'all. I, 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 people don't understand what y'all give for the community and for the people that, that live here and you all fight every fire, whether it's in your part of town or whether it's in somebody else's. And I appreciate you more than you know. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Consider an update on the CIP projects V and E schedule replacement purchases as part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five bond. Mike Donahoe.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, we're here tonight to talk about a request to approve the purchases of vehicles and equipment with the cost of over fifty thousand dollars that was planned for in the current fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And, uh, we have the fleet manager that's here tonight that can answer any questions, but if you look at the background on this, we have units, uh, in the fleet department, the parks department, the street department, the water department, and the police department that will be receiving new units this year. And the money was approved in this year's budget and mo- all of the purchases are, uh, on buy board contracts to save us more money. At this point, we're, uh, we were allocated seven hundred and five thousand dollars that was approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five fleet and vehicle replacement program. And the total request is for three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents. And as I stated, these are all on buy board contracts or joint cooperative contracts from different vendors. And, uh, this would be a great opportunity to appreciate our fleet department and our fleet manager for the good work that they do taking care of our vehicles. Our vehicles not only are our work trucks, but they're also rolling advertisements for the city. And because of the due diligence at our fleet services department, we have good vehicles on the streets, something we can be proud to drive and take care of. We're asking for approval.
I was just, uh, reading through our replacement schedule. I was really impressed that we still have some. Some of the vehicles, the agent vehicles are still rolling around and I don't know if they're a hundred percent operational, but you're, you know, still in the, uh, the fleet. But, uh, it'll be nice to get those replaced, I'm sure.
It has been, it's been the practice of this city for thirty-plus years that I can testify to, to take very good care of our equipment. Uh, vehicle working crew over there has been amazing over the years. We have kept cars running that I was surprised that they could be fixed. Uh, cars have lasted longer than I expected them to last at times and y'all have done an amazing job. We've had great mechanics and hardworking people. And I know there's a lot of planning goes into all of that, but, but I deeply appreciate what you do. And for those that haven't been around it, seen it that much, they will the longer they hang around. But thank you so very much. We appreciate it, Mike. We appreciate you. Thank you. There's no actually, we just give them a date. Item number seventeen, consider an act on presentation and acceptance of annual comprehensive financial report for the City of Rockport for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mayor missed it. We're gonna have to skip that one.
All right.
We missed sixteen, Mary. We missed sixteen of the.
Did I, Patrick? I got fifteen.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sixteen. I just read it, didn't I? Yeah, we just did it, yeah. We're down to seventeen?
No, sixteen.
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 They're similar, but they're different.
Oh, okay. Yes, I see what you're saying. I looked down, saw V and E and I thought we just got there doing that. All right.
I did the same thing.
Okay, consider an update on the V and E schedule replacement purchases part of the CIP projects and fiscal year twenty-twenty-five bond, twenty-twenty-four Dura Patcher, P-two trailer mounted Patcher. Mike Donahoe.
All right, thi- this is a, this is an important one. This is a trailer mounted pothole Patcher. And our current pothole Patcher, uh, is an old unit that's a nineteen ninety-eight GMC top pick with a P-three Dura Patcher that's mounted on there and it, it's been on there for several years and, uh, it's beginning to have cracks in it and the nineteen ninety-eight truck chassis is showing signs of wear and tear. And we did some research with our street department and our fleet department working together and they both decided that the Dura Patcher, uh, trailer mounted unit would best serve our needs and we have vehicles that can haul the, the pot Patcher around, if you will. And as you all know, that's a very important piece of equipment in our community. Uh, you know, we're, we're, uh, try to do pothole patching when the weather's a little bit warmer and the, the hot mix will stick into the hole better and things like that. And, but we, this is something that we're constantly looking at to upgrade our roads and everything else and we try to get to potholes as quick as they're reported. Sometimes we lag behind, but we need dependable equipment and the equipment we have is outdated and needs replacement.
If I'd have skipped that and hadn't got to it, I know people that would have come after me, so thank you for pointing that out.
Tell them, call the mayor to come fill potholes.
All right.
Getting stressed out about not getting it for, you know, ward three or.
Questions, counsel?
I move to approve bottom sixteen as presented. A second.
I have motion, second. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two. Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank y'all very much.
Number seventeen, I think. It had, it, it hasn't got a V and E with it, so I'll read it. Consider an act on presentation and acceptance of annual comprehensive financial report for the City of Rockport for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Sorrell.
Uh, just wanted to say that the, the comprehensive financial report we're very close, we've been working on this, Patrick, all our internal order. We've been feverishly working on it, but we really want to make sure that we dot our I's, cross our T's on it. I mean, the bulk of it is together, but we, we would rather make sure that we have the M-DNA done correctly and then we're, it's, it's done right. So we'd like to push it off to, uh, to October, no, November, excuse me, November, uh, on that. So my, my apologies on, on that, pushing it out. So we're, we're very, we're very close on it. Should, should be done probably by noon tomorrow or something like that is, is what we're thinking, but we just weren't able to get it, get it or comfortable to get it done enough to be presenting it tonight. So, thank you.
Does the twenty-three, twenty-four follow that one up shortly? Or when that would be coming?
Uh, that would be, that's, that's next in line. We're already, we're already.
I think you said you already.
In line to start it. Yes, we are actually already wo- working on it. We just, we just need to put a bow on this one, uh, get our ending balances. The good thing is I can speak to some of the preliminary, at least preliminary numbers, is that the, uh, fund balance, the general fund fund balances, you know, it was like had gone down like a million dollars on that twenty-twenty-two audit. This one at this, at this point, looks like that it's, it's actually gone up by about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So we went from, what, a hundred and twelve days or a hundred and eleven days, I think, in twenty-twenty-two for general fund fund balance to about a hundred and twenty. So that, that looks like that we, there's been some, some of the things that the city has put into place, the departments, I mean, and, and again, this is a group effort. Everybody's been working hard trying to watch their budgets, manage their budgets, do, do, do thing, do things right. And it looks like it is, it is paying off. And so I'm happy to say that, that, and that's just with a partial year. So it makes me real excited about the, the, the next, next year's, um, audit, audit report. So it looks like that we're going in the right direction. And again, we, we'd rather give, give you something that, that's, that's really tight than, than something that is, is good, but maybe not perfect. So my apologies to the city manager. I'm sorry. Um, I, I have a question.
I am saying you'd rather have it right than right now.
Yeah.
And that's just, this is too important.
Yes. Robbie, I got a question.
Yes.
I think we're due to start February, March, working on next year's budget and, and what have you. Will you have the next one completed by then, you think? Is that, well, if you, if you had the, oh, and. How much, because we're gonna get this one done in the next few days or whatever and have it ready for the November meeting. If we start budget stuff in February, March, you think you'll have the next one, how much time you need?
I, the, the, the nice thing is, is once we get this, put a bow on this, on this audit, that will give us some good, um, uh, beginning fund balances, um, to, to be working with. Uh, I, I cannot say that we would have the audit complete because I think we're looking at the January-ish timeframe and I think that that would be probably too aggressive. I, I don't, I will say, I will take this opportunity to say that we're doing, in this audit, one of, one of the things that is, is taking longer is that we're doing a lot of cleanup. There, there's, there were some things that were in there even from Hurricane Harvey that were still in the books that we removed. Um, I mean upwards of near a million dollars. Um, and so we're, we're cleaning up. Although, there's a lot of stuff that's been, that we're cleaning up. Patrick's been going through fund by fund. You know, this balance was here last year and even the year before. Do you really need it? If, you know, what is it for? If we don't need it, let's push it through. So we're cleaning them up, cleaning them up, cleaning it up. And, and it's done intentionally because we don't want to just be, just drag and jump forward. That's not doing anybody any help and it just clears, clears up your books. And, and, um, and people are looking at this. I mean, our, whenever we, we went out and we did our, uh, tax note, issuance, I mean, bond council was asking some very tough questions and they were asking, are you, are you all, are you all, uh, budgeting, uh, reserves with reserves? Are you all doing a real budget? You know, we were able to tell, no, this is a sincere budget, a balanced budget. Uh, but they're, they're looking and they're watching and they're, they review this stuff. Other people are looking and we're trying to do this right.
So now we're not gonna, if it's okay, I would like to not commit Robbie to February.
Sure.
Because he needs to be done. We're gonna start in February, but we're not gonna start with the numbers, I promise.
So we won't be looking at this next fall like we are now and we, we should have it done way before, you know, summer or something, something usable.
You, you'll have good solid numbers to work on this.
Okay. That's all, that's all I was looking for. Thank you.
The nice thing is that as we get this cleaned, cleaned up and moving forward, it makes it easier and easier as you're going forward because you're not, you're not questioning, well, what about this? What about this? What about this? It makes it easier and easier and that's what we want. We want synergies, um, not obstacles.
So that sounds fine. And thank you guys for cleaning it up and what have you. If there was some old stuff getting dragged through, thank you for the extra work.
Yeah, and I'd make the comment that, um, if we get back on schedule, which is the intent with the twenty-four, that the deadline to have that filed is March thirty-first. So i- if we, it's not gonna be February, but it should be by the end of March, so.
That'll, that'll work for us.
And I spoke with Lauren, we went back, we talked about it today and they were sk- I mean, they have to hold the books open probably till, uh, mid-November, first of December. Then he's gonna start closing and getting items to be, so we're gonna get, uh, going on the twenty-twenty-four audit as quick as we can. So the intent is to have it at least by the council meeting in March, which gives the thirty-first deadline, so they usually.
That's cer- that's certainly reasonable. Thank you.
You could do it six, six months. The six month.
Yeah, the six month.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, this has been a big concern for the city for a while and I appreciate the work y'all have done on it, Robbie. Thank you, thank you, sir. Appreciate the work you've done and, and waiting a little while longer to have it completed is understandable.
I apologize. I thought we would get it, but I guess, I, we're, we're to the point where I basically have it all together, but I'm taking the time and chasing, you know, rounding numbers and edits and it's just, it takes a long, there's, you can't believe how many times that's the same numbers reported twenty different ways in the report, so. Just takes time to proof it and make sure everything's accurate.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Item number eighteen, consider approval of construction change directive number four related to new city hall project. Ms. Henry.
Good evening, man, counsel. Um, this is, uh, construction change directive number four. It only consists of one item and that is for, um, the elevator. And basically, uh, we failed an inspection due to there was a change in how, uh, was state statutes are written on what has to be there and done and things of that nature. And from the, from the time we started the project till the time it was inspected, there was a change, so we have to update these plans. So, uh, that is the purpose of it. Do y'all have any questions at this time?
I move to approve as presented.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Port city manager.
You guys, and you have a little report. I'll point out a couple of things.
There we go.
Okay, so, the, um, you'll want to give a look to the new developments. I'm sure that's on everybody's mind. Y'all can go through these, um, as you like. You've seen the financial reports. Those are emailed to you prior to the meeting. Unspent bond funds are now all either complete or in progress. That's a pretty big deal. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out was that our police department has a four point three one star rating. I mean, this isn't Google, but I mean, it's close. So, um, if someone can get, getting a ticket can give them a four-star rating, then the rest of us can surely earn a four-star rating and our focus for this coming year is gonna be customer service. That's what we're here for.
Is that, is that out of ten stars or five stars?
Well, it's out of fifty-seven, but, you know. Yeah, for. Yeah, four, four point, four point three out of ninety-nine. But I feel energized and hopeful on this because someone that got a ticket said, my officer was professional and very respectful. I mean, come on. We can all do, we can all do a good job. We fail. Sometimes we get it wrong. But we're gonna work really hard on customer service this coming year. The other thing I wanted to point out is what's new? You have a new packet, way to receive your packet. I'm getting used to it too. I'm not a fan yet, but I will be. City marketing, we've just appointed the board there. We've started a few things. And when I say we, I mean Shelley and Reagan kind of, but it's we. Laserfish, that's where we store all of our old documents. Shelley's getting those organized and put into the appropriate folders whereby they have historically been just scanned in kind of randomly. Not, not any big deal. It's just no one's had really time to do it, and Shelley brings us the expertise to do it. Website cleanup, facilities cleanup, I'll tell y'all about that in a minute. I might have told y'all about that the other day. And then a civic engagement campaign called Get Engaged. So we're gonna get engaged with Rockport. It'll be exciting. It's something. We're doing it in-house. Not gonna cost y'all a thing-ish. Dates to remember, November eleventh is Veterans Day, November twelfth is a council meeting. So if you have questions, ask them before the holiday, please. November fifteenth is our city cleanup day. I, have I mentioned this to them? I may have mentioned it to you. We're closing at noon, and everybody's gonna get their business cleaned up. Cars, everything. Utility billing will not be closing. We will pick a better day for them to close than the fifteenth. Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth are Thanksgiving holidays as well. And then there was, is that it? That's it. That's all I had to show you.
The porch from counsel?
I don't have anything to report on my side.
I wanted to mention that I got an opportunity the other night to go to the Fall Festival with my family. And just, I know some of the folks are here that were involved there. I know chief ed folks out there, you guys did. And there was lots of city of Rockport employees out there working and volunteering, all kinds of things. It, it just, I don't know that it could have been any better of an event. That was a lot of fun. My family had a good time. And, but just kudos to everybody, please. I know you'll let them know. Very much appreciated. Got, got to meet Roscoe. Roscoe was out there. And, but it was a lot of fun. Appreciate that.
Can Roscoe come to the next city council meeting?
He'll be here the next meeting.
Okay. Hold you to that. Do a formal introduction.
Is that how you're getting your reviews up, Ladaw?
Well, he hasn't been on the streets yet, but.
He should get his own survey response.
Members of staff in council got to attend the T M L, annual T M L conference last, two weeks ago. Real successful. We came back with some good information from some vendors. We actually had a meeting today with one of the vendors we met there. Gave us some good ideas for the city and got some good updates on things happening in the legislature this year or proposed, happening in the legislature this year. And it was a good time to, to meet other council members from around the state. And trust me, they all have the same problems we do, with the exception of hurricanes for those out west. But anyways, it was a good, good time. I'm thankful, grateful for the opportunity.
Very seldom I would say something nice about having to spend three days in downtown Houston, but it was nice. T M L was really good. There's a lot of good speakers, a lot of good things go on there. And we appreciate the city sending us. It's, it's a great time to be there. We are going to have an executive session. Let me read what I have to read. In reference to Texas government code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one consultation with attorney, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four personnel matters. We will do an evaluation of the city manager, municipal judge, city secretary, city hall construction discussion, Concho Street construction, general land office drainage project, Ranges County Navigation District notice of violation, merchants bonding company. It is seven twenty-five. We are in executive session. So two, we're back in regular session.
Watch it again.
Second.
We're returning.